Are you ready, Becky? It is 9:00 AM. I will call the meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. We will be abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended, a copy of which is posted by the entrance to the room for public review at any time. At 9:15, we will recess as Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as Lincoln County Board of Equalization, again abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended. First order of business this morning is to open with prayer, and if everybody would please join me. Heavenly Father, we come to you, Lord, with Thanksgiving in our hearts. We come before you humbly, asking for your guidance, asking for a touch of your wisdom as we deliberate the issues that are important to our constituents and the citizens of Lincoln County. Lord, guide us as we make these decisions, that they are pleasing in your eye, and that they do the most good for the people that we serve. Father, we ask for your continued protection over our first responders, our law enforcement personnel, and our military personnel that are stationed here and abroad, that protect us from the risks and the attacks against our way of life. Lord, we ask that you just guide this meeting, be with us all, and continue to bless Lincoln County. In your name we pray. Amen. Next order of business is to approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting that was held July 25, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held on July 25, 2022.
Motion by Woodruff, second by Hugley. Any further discussion or corrections? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Wular.
Aye.
Aye.
Next order of business is the claims and treasurer's receipts as presented by the Treasurer's Office.
Chairman, I would move to approve the claims and treasurer's receipts as presented.
Second.
Motion by Weems, second by Woodruff.
Mr. Chairman, I would make note that the payment to Wayne Dowhauer Construction in the amount of $23,951 would be the final payment for the remodel project for the upstairs.
That project officially has a bow on it, so does your...
I think we have a bow on it. It's might have... Yeah, it's a bow on it.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Chairman, I'd make a motion. We approve the claims and treasurer's receipts as presented.
We already have a motion, but thank you.
And a second.
Hearing, no further discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Wular. Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Bruns.
Next order of business is an interlocal agreement with Keith County to house inmates at the Lincoln County Detention Center. Tyler, I believe everything.
I haven't really changed this yet, so I didn't get black on it yet.
Oh.
So you're something I didn't say before you had last time.
Nothing on the table, I don't know a week, I guess.
And what was the item that we were concerned with, again?
Minor language. Take it. Session four.
Accept them or not accept them. Yes.
Or send them.
Tyler, do you think you'll have a chance to look at it this week? Mr. Chairman, would you consider table that?
Yeah, we will table it for next week.
Looking at this claim that gives this, these refunds because it is officially chanked over from the county, they're taking it out, transferring it to...
Yeah, they have their own checking account. They're paying your bills. You have your own table.
Okay.
Next. Next order of business is authorize the chairman to sign a right-of-way application submitted by Great Plains Communications.
Have you looked at this?
Yeah.
Something from '83 all the way up to the county line on cattle growers, is that right?
Yeah.
And this is actual cable, not just conduit? Fiber, yeah, fiber optic cable. Put in high speed. Internet.
That would be in the ditch, then, I take it?
Yeah.
And then even in the ditch, they still go, I think it's the 42 or 48 or whatever it is, isn't it, from the lowest spot?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion. We authorize you to sign the right-of-way application submitted by Great Plains Communications.
Second.
Motion by Woodruff, second by Wular. Any further discussion on this? Do have their check as well. Hearing no further conversation, comments, roll call vote, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Wular.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Is most of the corn pretty well pollinated up near there?
Yeah, I think so. It's had plenty of humidity in it.
That humidity, we've had it like how we did here, did it?
No. The corn is miserable. We can't put it in, but we're good for corn here. This is a stretch of summer. I just dread it. Because I hate winter.
I look forward to the middle of September.
Me too.
You know, we were talking a few months ago out there on Buffalo and...
Yeah.
I'll hear someone having frostbite. It's not so funny when it's in your own backyard. That's my neighbors.
Becky, this is just moving things into their own...
Where was I dry... Oh, you're on Sunset. I went down Sunset on Friday and saw it was over there and I thought, well, that's a weird place for semis.
That's kind of what we thought of, too.
Are they new? New neighbors?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jethro's granny and...
By the way, has a report, Visit North Platte met on Wednesday. This is the first meeting of Visit North Platte. Pete Bowles is the representative from the...
City Council.
City Council, and Gary Pearson is a large member. That was the first meeting of the expanded Board of Directors. You'd think that'd be something extended, you know, people, you know, we take care of the major part. Who's initially offered these? It all right. It's probably coming from...
Does that come from you, Tyler? It comes from the chairman's office.
I think that office over there, that the LA...
I'll show it to Tyler.
Everybody see him in the red, LA? This one might be more unusual. The reason that we're asked.
Well, it's good stuff. Law enforcement supply has got one bottle of... Two gorilla... One bottle of spray glue, two gorilla tapes, and a cable license tied to them only for 48 bucks. I think there are more there than reading. So it's valid appraisal, so it's now no longer returned in? Has it really? Oh, okay.
It is 9:15. We will now recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization. Again, we will be abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended, a copy of which is posted by the entrance of the room. First order of business is to approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting that was held on July 25, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on July 25, 2022.
Motion by Wular.
Second.
Second by Weems. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Wular.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Hugley. Woodruff.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Next order of business, certificates of correction and refund is submitted by the county assessor. Julie Stine, state of Florida. Good morning, Julie. Next order of business is a late filing of homestead exemption applications submitted by the county assessor.
Do have one of these. Julie Stine, Lincoln County Assessor. As you can see, there's a letter attached, a brief note from the accountant's office, Susan Mullin, that I think there was kind of a, after talking with her and stuff, there was kind of a misunderstanding between who was going to file and who didn't. So she has a little note there that was filed late due to a scheduling error on their part. And then Mr. Morgan himself also wrote that he was in the process of selling his farm at McPherson County. So he was preoccupied and it just kind of slipped by him to... He was not late filing last year, so... That's usually one of the prerequisites we require, as long as they're not late two years in a row, where, and they have a decent reason why they're late. We're pretty flexible, usually.
Something that's kind of a board policy for a lot of years. We just sort of accepted that.
You're good with it, Julie, right?
Yep.
Okay, okay.
There is a certain, you know, filing deadline even for late applications, and he did get it filed within that deadline as well, so...
And what is that date?
I believe it's, I don't know if it's July 22, possibly. I'm not sure off the top of my head, but he did meet that.
Okay.
Late filing. Otherwise, they have to have a doctor's certificate and reason, you know, a letter from the doctor why they were past that date if they were late filing.
Mr. Chairman, are you ready for motion?
I am.
Make a motion. We accept the late filing for the homestead exemption applications submitted by Mr. Charles Morgan. We have an explanation letter from the accountant on kind of a confusion on the filing. They were not late for it last year, and that would be my motion.
Motion by Hugley.
Second.
Second by Woodruff. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Hugley.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Wular.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Is there anything else to come before the Lincoln County Board of Equalization? Hearing none. We will adjourn as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization at 9:18 and reconvene as Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. Thank you, Julie.
Mr. Field, you'll be putting this drink in front of me. You're in 20 years. Joe Wright. Yeah. Roscoe, what was it? Well, he was up north, but what I was thinking of was, lived down by Roscoe, is his name. And his wife swiped over the land and come in, you know, I can't remember his name.
I think you've changed.
I change back and forth. I only do that unofficial stuff, that blue ink. If it's not official, I don't do it.
Just making sure you weren't...
Yeah, claims are...
Changing back and forth with pen colors like you do shoe colors.
Oh.
Ooh, that's not going away, is it?
For those of you listening in the audience, that was an inside story. So we kept them inside, shouldn't we?
Had you not said anything, I'm curious, how many people would have actually noticed? I don't think I would have...
You know, that's what Kay said.
Yeah. I don't think I would.
But you're so sober. I was so subconscious.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Good.
Mine was in my pack.
It was?
I didn't overturn it.
Oh, this one? Yeah.
There was one on the hazard mitigation plan, too. It was just, it was just a notice. This is from, it's a surrounding county. It was a surrounding county, so I haven't notified.
J E always had the contract probably at least 10 years that I don't want that. He would use the...
You're writing in black again.
Yeah, yeah. Individual, I don't... It's easy to swim downstream.
Are we to attend one of these, or is this for...
Rich notice.
Do you want this back?
I'll make sure Brandon knows, because he's probably doing some...
Too bad we don't have enough of a minute on county tech.
I always wonder. That's probably a bargain, then.
Hmm.
I did a little vet work myself this week, Jerry.
What's that?
Did a little vet work myself.
You did?
On a horse. I don't know, I probably told you, got cut rope and I don't know how that ended. We took him out of the trailer and he had a big cut and we just roped him and it really started going down like that, you know. So I didn't have much duct tape left, but what I had, I duct taped it together before I took him in the next day, you know. And it was a little straighter. It took four or five stitches, but at least it wasn't bad.
Didn't spread, yeah.
And I didn't charge, I didn't even charge for it.
That's amazing.
I did some vet work this weekend, too. My horse has a sunburnt nose.
You know what? I didn't do any of that.
You didn't do nothing?
Nothing of that. You won't take that back. I sprayed Booker's cows yesterday.
You did do some vet work then.
I did. I sprayed these cows and cows.
I bet you every lease he wishes they had a landlord like that.
You have a light colored horse?
No, she's a paint, but she has a pink nose. So we're putting blue sunscreen on her now like we do for the grandkids.
How did, how did you know it was...
It was blistering and peeling. Yeah, it looked bad.
You've got approved documentation. I'd love the pair. It is 9:30. We will move on to our 9:30 agenda item, which is discuss and consider authorizing the chairman to sign a special designated liquor application submitted by Powell's Brewing Company for Western Nebraska Cat Craft Beer Festival to be held on September 10th, 2022 at Powell's Brewing Company.
Second.
Motion by Hughley, second by Wuller. Any further discussion on this?
They are using wristbands and the area is fenced in, so it's very secure.
Yeah, they're very, very trained. Hearing no other discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Hughley.
Aye.
Wuller.
Aye.
Wuller.
Aye.
Brent.
Aye. Vera doesn't even know how to spell your name. Becky. Becky.
What?
I said Vera doesn't even know how to spell your name. Russell?
I get that a lot.
You pay him anyway, huh? This isn't your last meeting, right?
No, we got a couple more weeks.
Do you have anything on all of these now?
I do. I'm on the...
Can we get copies, maybe? Tammy make copies?
Tammy's gonna put it up on the screen.
Okay.
As long as we can see it, that's all. Yeah, it'll be up on the screen.
Okay.
Unless you want copies of the email chain. I can just review it.
I don't need it.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that we do.
Yeah, Tammy's gonna put it up.
Section question.
I have the Legals and I will go up.
Okay.
That's Jason's signature. Let me see.
Is that Jason?
Yes, Jason's signature.
I didn't know he was a doctor.
You have your P, you have your PhD. They're talking about your signature.
He still, he'll ask for more money.
You write prescriptions. Couldn't recognize your signature. Joe's.
Still practicing my old ones from grade school.
Mine looks like...
Didn't you notice I still haven't got them?
Mine looks like an EKG readout, so...
I'm still practicing my old ones from grade school.
Mine looks like...
Didn't you notice I still haven't got them?
Mine looks like an EKG readout, so...
Mine looks like an EKG readout, so...
I'm always wondering.
I always wonder.
That's probably a bargain then.
Hmm. I sure hope they're not gonna, they're gonna kill this poor little... Well, somebody's gonna speak up for him. Just a bunch of farmers and ranchers around here, you don't understand.
If you had a rat in your house, would you want it dead? I have a rat in my house. I want it dead.
Stop talking like that.
Yeah.
I'm gonna tell him.
Yeah.
She wouldn't believe you guys.
Jerry's husband started talking about the teeth, not me.
I'll just point him to the livestream.
Oh, they watch it, him and the grandkids. It's their, it's their noon time entertainment on Mondays.
I appreciate his... I did a little vet work myself this week, Jerry.
What's that?
Did a little vet work myself.
You did?
On a horse. I don't know, I probably told you, got cut rope and I don't know how that ended. We took him out of the trailer and he had a big cut and we just roped him and it really started going down like that, you know. So I didn't have much duct tape left, but what I had, I duct taped it together before I took him in the next day, you know. And it was a little straighter. It took four or five stitches, but at least it wasn't bad.
Didn't spread, yeah.
And I didn't even charge, I didn't even charge for it.
That's amazing.
I did some vet work this weekend, too. My horse has a sunburnt nose.
You know what? I didn't do any of that.
You didn't do nothing?
Nothing of that. You won't take that back. I sprayed Booker's cows yesterday.
You did do some vet work then.
I did. I sprayed these cows and cows.
I bet you every lease he wishes they had a landlord like that.
You have a light colored horse?
No, she's a paint, but she has a pink nose. So we're putting blue sunscreen on her now like we do for the grandkids.
How did, how did you know it was...
It was blistering and peeling. Yeah, it looked bad.
There is at least some notation.
You've got approved documentation. I'd love the pair.
Yeah.
It is 9:30. We will move on to our 9:30 agenda item, which is discuss and consider authorizing the chairman to sign a special designated liquor application submitted by Powell's Brewing Company for Western Nebraska Cat Craft Beer Festival to be held on September 10th, 2022 at Powell's Brewing Company.
Second.
Motion by Hughley, second by Wuller. Any further discussion on this?
They are using wristbands and the area is fenced in, so it's very secure.
Yeah, they're very, very trained. Hearing no other discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Hughley.
Aye.
Wuller.
Aye.
Wuller.
Aye.
Brent.
Aye. Vera doesn't even know how to spell your name. Becky. Becky.
What?
I said Vera doesn't even know how to spell your name. Russell?
I get that a lot.
You pay him anyway, huh? This isn't your last meeting, right?
No, we got a couple more weeks.
Do you have anything on all of these now?
I do. I'm on the...
Can we get copies, maybe? Tammy make copies?
Tammy's gonna put it up on the screen.
Okay.
As long as we can see it, that's all. Yeah, it'll be up on the screen.
Okay.
Unless you want copies of the email chain. I can just review it.
I don't need it.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that we do.
Yeah, Tammy's gonna put it up.
Section question.
I have the Legals and I will go up.
Okay.
That's Jason's signature. Let me see.
Is that Jason?
Yes, Jason's signature.
I didn't know he was a doctor.
You have your P, you have your PhD. They're talking about your signature.
He's still, he'll ask for more money.
You write prescriptions. Couldn't recognize your signature. Joe's.
I'm still practicing my old ones from grade school.
Mine looks like...
Didn't you notice I still haven't got them?
Mine looks like an EKG readout, so...
I'm still practicing my old ones from grade school.
Mine looks like...
Didn't you notice I still haven't got them?
Mine looks like an EKG readout, so...
I'm still practicing my old ones from grade school.
Mine looks like...
Didn't you notice I still haven't got them?
Mine looks like an EKG readout, so...
I'm still practicing my old ones from grade school.
I'm always wondering.
I'm still practicing my old ones from grade school.
I'm always wondering.
I'm still practicing my old ones from grade school.
I'm always wondering.
I'm still practicing my old ones from grade school.
I'm always wondering.
I'm still practicing my old ones from grade school.
I'm always wondering.
I'm still practicing my old ones from grade school.
I'm always wondering.
I'm still practicing my old ones from grade school.
I'm always wondering.
I'm still practicing my old ones from grade school.
I'm always wondering.
I'm still practicing my old ones from grade school.
I'm always wondering.
I'm still practicing my old ones from grade school.
I'm always wondering.
I'm still practicing my old ones from grade school.
I'm always wondering.
I'm still practicing my old ones from grade school.
I'm always wondering.
I'm still practicing my old ones from grade school.
I'm always wondering.
I'm still practicing my old ones from grade school.
I'm always wondering.
I'm still practicing my old ones from grade school.
I'm always wondering.
I'm still practicing my old ones from grade school.
I'm always wondering.
I'm still practicing my old ones from grade school.
I'm always wondering.
I'm still practicing my old ones from grade school.
I'm always wondering.
I'm still practicing my old ones from grade school.
He's gonna hand me the right next door. Yeah. It is 9:40. We will now move on to our next agenda item, which is the county assessor, Julie Stanger, will be presenting the three-year plan of assessment update for Lincoln County for 2022. Anne Charity, good morning.
Assessor. She's the one that actually goes out and does all this stuff over these three years, so if you have questions, she's probably better to answer than me. So I believe you guys all got a copy of this. It's just required by state statute to turn a copy of this into, you guys let you know kind of what our assessment plans are over the next three years. And I might just kind of let Charity go through definitely at least the residential and commercial and recreational. And then I can answer questions on ag if anybody's got questions on the ag land.
So for North Platte, last year for 2022, we ended up falling out of compliance, as you guys know. And so we had to do a 4% increase on the south side of North Platte and we did a 7% increase on the north side. For 2023, we will, we will be doing a full physical review and inspection of all the north side properties. And so that 7% increase will come off as a trinit adjustment and they will be reassessed. I have already looked at stats for south side. I'm guessing we're gonna have to do it again for south side just because the market has gone so crazy.
The blanket increase.
The blanket increase, yes.
So we won't have time to physically review and inspect the south side.
Next year.
There's just too many parcels for, you know, the staff that I have to get the whole city in the Platte done in one year. So we split it north side and south side.
Right. So villages, we did those for 2021, I believe. Yeah, 2021. And those were actually reviewed in 2019, but because of our conversion, we weren't able to get those done. The conversion just took way too long. And so we didn't actually, or for 2020, we reassessed them for 2020.
By conversion, you mean the software that you guys are using?
Right, from Ryan to Gannard.
Assessments. Okay.
Yeah. So, so villages, we all will be doing with those is new construction, any rehab, anything like that, double checking to make sure that our stats are still okay. I have looked at those as well, stat wise. We still have three more months in our ratio period, but I'm afraid we're gonna have to do an increase on those, too. Yeah. The only villages so far that are not showing needing an increase are Maxwell Brady, Wallace, Wolfley. Everything else is looking like it's gonna need it, so. And then for our rural residential and improved ag, we did a full review back in 2020 for all of that, new land valuations, everything. So that, again, we're not gonna be doing a whole lot there. Just our normal pickup work, new construction, rehab, that kind of thing. Again, I've already looked at stats. We're probably gonna have to do a blanket adjustment on all of that, too. So, yeah, it's kind of crazy what the market has done in the last year, year and a half.
The market is crazy right now. I checked this morning at the housing stock. There's 53 houses on the market in Lincoln County. Thirty-four of those are in North Platte, 19 the rest of the county. A healthy market is about 100 to 150 in the county. So it's, it's absolutely skewed.
It is. It's very skewed. And then the way they're selling, I mean, they have bidding wars and people selling or buying over market value and paying cash, not having appraisal.
Sight unseen.
Yes, yes. And so it's, it's not your typical market by any means, and it's kind of scary.
Making our job real tough to keep up with everything.
It is. It is. So, again, with the rural or the recreational, all of the lakes will be reviewed this year as part of our full review. They are already out of compliance again, so we definitely need to do them, but they will be part of our full review for next year, for 2023. And then...
We have a lot of, a lot of people in here talking to us next year, do you, won't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm afraid of it.
Yeah.
This year, we had to do the blanket increase out of the lake to the 4%. But like Charity explained, this next year, we'll go out and take photos and actually physically look at all the houses and everything. And then I'm sure the leasehold interest increase will probably be where we'll come into effect.
Department of Revenue, does that, does that come from the Department of Revenue?
What's that?
The notice that you're out of compliance. Who sent you that note?
Well, we have to run our stats. The Department of Revenue does keep, you know, look at the sales. They have what's called a sales file. So every sale that occurs in Lincoln County, they have, those are in a sales file down there. And they run the stats for residential.
So that's what they're doing?
They take two years with it, yeah. Yeah, we run it. That's where we get our stats is we run it out of Department of Revenue's sales file. And if we don't do the increase for the newer ones, the Tax Equalization Review Commission, when we certify values in March, if our stats are out of compliance and we didn't do anything to correct it in April, when the Turk Tax Equalization Review Commission looks at all 93 county stats in every area, they will call us to come in front of them and then they order an issue, issue order to the county that you have to go and increase your residential by X percent or your ag or the village of Sutherland or whatever. So we try to do it here, because sometimes we've seen them before where maybe the only issue is in a certain area, like a neighborhood, but they don't look at it like that. They look at it as a whole. So they'll do a whole percentage increase of the whole residential, whether some of the, or maybe the whole village, it's all the villages, and maybe only Hirsch needed it. So they have a little bit broader increase when they do it. So that's why we really kind of try to look at it and keep up here ourselves.
A little bit more heavy hammer from the state. A little bit more heavy hammer from the state than-
Yeah. And they go to the middle of that ninety-two to a hundred percent.
Instead of the lower edge, like what we try to do.
Right, yeah. Whereas, yeah, we can sneak in and get by if we need to, if it's too low. Yeah. On the unimproved ag, we don't really, we watch for building permits that come in. Usually we get new aerial imagery from the FSA. Our GIS company, G Works, gets the imagery from them and they try to get it at least every two years. So we just had new 2020 imagery. I think we got it late in 2020 or the first part of 2021. So I'm assuming that they will fly and do imagery again for 2022. And when we actually get that, you know, if it's late this year, if it's the first part of 2023. But when we do that, we usually try to, especially when it comes that we're required to review everything with at least every six years, the physical inspection. So when we do that, physical review of the improved rural properties, my data entry, people that work with the appraisers, when they're, we call routing it, you know, putting them in order for my appraisers to go around and look at it, they have that imagery in front of them and they look at it and make sure, you know, if it's vacant or because you can see very well if there's a new house or some grain bins and stuff, they'll show up on there. So if they see something that we don't have on there, they will pull those cards and the appraisers will pick that stuff up then. They're supposed to fill out an improvement form for us to let us know, but, you know, ag is not required by the city planning and county planning and zoning to come in and get a building permit if it is specifically an ag building. So we try to watch real close, watch that aerial imagery for pivots, too, because they're pretty noticeable, too, if we get a new pivot going somewhere.
Julie, is there a software that we have to aerial images that would automatically, rather than you have to go, yeah, that fence is there, that barn is there? It just puts in a red something from last time? I mean, it's an electronic entry. It looks like it would be-
There are, there are GIS companies out there that do do that. Is it Eagle View? Not sure what they're called now. Aren't they the ones that changed their name? There are GIS companies out there that do it.
Do they just probably overlay layers and then something that picks off the layer?
And they will flag those, any change from the year before, they flag it and then we can look at it without, like you said, looking at every single piece, but.
Thank you.
Pictometry.
Pictometry is what we used to call it. It might be called Eagle View now.
We started, we looked at some of those quotes and they're awfully expensive.
Now, we have heard that, like I said, I'd have to look into it more, that the ARPA funds can be used for that purpose, if you would be interested in doing that. And I know we had talked about talking with the city and maybe the 911, sheriff or the police, city police.
My concern with that is ARPA funds are supposed to be like one-time use and that program is a subscription and-
Correct. It would be an expense that you have every year, every two years, or however often they do it. But that's why I think we talked about if we could get a couple other entities on board, it wouldn't be that huge increase for just one person, but.
Julie, would that save your staff time to concentrate on-
You wouldn't even know. We spend a lot of time, like if we can't get in the backyard or, you know, onto somebody's property. Pictometry actually has a three hundred and sixty view of a house. So you can measure a back deck, an addition, a pool, you know, anything that you can't access, you can get to with pictometry. And that's what's really handy about that. It would save us a ton of time.
The savings on your time was one item, but the other item we discussed previously was the safety of your staff as well.
Yeah.
Which is not to be overlooked.
Right.
And also you may, you know, honestly pick up more improvements sooner. You know, because we look, you know, physically are there once every six years just because we're limited on staff. We can't be there every year. But if we have this and you did it every, I don't think most counties do it every year. It's like every two years.
Two or three.
Or three, you're still looking at that imagery, you know, probably five years sooner than, four to five years sooner than you would otherwise. So you might pick up something that we didn't know was there and get taxes on it, you know, apply taxes on it.
Remind me, you had mentioned what a proximate cost was going to be some time ago. Can you, do you remember what that was?
I don't remember what it was.
Don't remember, but it was-
It was really significant.
It was like a hundred and eighty thousand a year.
Was it a hundred and eighty? I was saying a hundred and twenty. Yeah, it might have been. Because I think you misquoted us. I think you quoted us a hundred and twenty some. But whoever did that calculated it wrong. So he would have stuck by it if we'd went with him then. But now I'm sure he'd probably-
And that's a one each year lease.
Well, I think that was not that every year.
Get it up and going, I'm assuming.
I'm not sure what-
I'm sure the yearly subscription is not that every year.
I would have to-
But the initial purchase is something that could be considered. But then something you can budget for each year for your.
And if we could get more departments on board, that would significantly reduce our costs from our department. Because I know that, you know, if you look at, because I think Adams County has pictometry. There's several other counties that have it and like their police departments use it and their, or their sheriff's department uses it. And there's other departments that all pitch in and-
I think their city uses it. They could utilize and put, you know, utility stuff on there. You know, when they do their utilities, know where all their meters and stuff are at. So, you know, if you could get a city on board, too, and stuff, you know. To be honest, that to me, that would probably be the only way that it would be feasible to afford to do it.
Be feasible, but it's still a tax increase that you'd be looking at, given the time.
No, we, I think we're close to twenty thousand a year now is what I pay for maintenance and website for G Works, you know.
I think I skipped over the commercial. Commercial we did for 2022, a full physical review and inspection. And those stats are good. They have been for years and years and years. And I don't think we'll be seeing another increase with the commercial this next year. But we will be doing all of the new construction and anything like that for this year, for 2023.
Looks there's a lot of that out there right now.
It is.
Yeah.
Which is a good thing for the county, yeah.
Any questions? I think it just underscores the point that we need more housing stock countywide.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to our next agenda item, which is discuss and consider a request of Art Hazenhour concerning a small triangle piece of property on South Somerset Road that the state abandoned to the county. I believe we're going to pull this up on the screen. Is that right, Jenny?
Yes. I requested this item be put on the agenda. I've been communicating with Art. If you would like to come up, Art, and introduce yourselves and sign in.
Okay, I'm Art Hazenhour. I'm one of the members of the Hazenhour Acre LLC. That's all this land was owned by my father. This is my sister, Miranda Tobiason, and she's also a member of the Hazenhour Acre LLC.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning for being here.
Morning.
Art, do you want to give us a little backstory on this piece of property and what your request is?
Yeah, the history on this property was all owned by my father and grandfather. And there's been a little triangle piece right in the middle of that quarter. And that used to be a state Highway 23. And then it become in forty-seven, forty-six, forty-seven, become a county, Somerset Road. And that property basically was banded from the state and the state had moved a, the Highway 23 to the north of our property. It's still deeded to the state. Basically turned over to the county. And we're kind of wanting to put a request in to purchase that little triangle piece of land, just to square that off along Somerset Road, just like it looks to actually probably put a new fence in there without jogging around it. Looking at the back history on it, my father basically passed away in seventy-eight. Turned it over to my brother. And my father has always paid taxes on that little piece of property. We always use that piece of property pasture. And the fence is actually on the county road, is straight, not jogged around like that now. Of course, since my brother passed away, it was all deeded to his siblings. So there's six members that own the Hazenhour Acre LLC. I don't know. You got anything to add, sis?
No, I'm the vice president of the LLC, but yeah, we're wanting to purchase it. And because, are we still paying tax on that?
Uh, no. Since my brother Ralph passed away, we have not paid taxes on it. But we've paid taxes on it from nineteen forty-seven up to twenty seventeen.
In my efforts to help you guys with this, I communicated with Judy Clark. And Judy determined that the deed did still say state of Nebraska. So she referred me to Gary Thayer at the Nebraska Department of Roads. And the legal description on the property, in case you need to know that, is the southwest quarter of twenty-six, ten, thirty-one west, right off of Somerset Road. It's about a half an acre of property. The land was purchased from the Hazenhour family in nineteen forty-seven for setbacks for Highway 23. And I believe Burlington Northern was also involved in that somehow. According to Gary, the state vacated the property in nineteen fifty-five. And he shared with me a resolution, or a state statute, thirty-nine, thirteen, oh nine, that says those properties, when they are vacated by the State Department of Roads, go to county ownership. So he did some research. He referred me to Lisa Sadler, who is the permitting officer. She agreed that the property had been vacated to the county and the state has no interest. And just to be on the safe side, she also conferred with Todd Wickin, who is the Nebraska Department of Roads property manager out of Lincoln, Nebraska. And he, too, did say that the state has no interest that the property was vacated to the county. And so it's up to the county commissioners as to what happens with this property. As Art said, their family did pay taxes on the property for many, many years, from forty-seven until twenty seventeen. And maintenance of the fence is the current, the fence is in need of repair and Art did not want to make that investment if the property was not legally his. So that's what they are here today to try to accomplish.
We have several deeds in the county. We have one of Brady that the state vacated and they, Tyler and I had a visit with Gary Thayer. We found out that they're not under the practice of notifying the county that they've vacated these parcels.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of them floating around. And I think maybe we should let Tyler weigh in on the procedure, but in essence, what I gathered was if we discover them, then we can act on them, but we, they're not going to notify us. The state's not going to tell us. That's why it still shows state of Nebraska.
Correct. And they said that the state statute supersedes any of the deeds at our register of deeds office, so.
Mr. Chairman, in the past, there have been a number of these that we have acted on that, and it's a case by case. It's usually just like yours when somebody brings it to our attention. One question I had, if I wanted to purchase that for a small cow operation, how many cows do you think I could probably graze on that?
Half acre.
Yeah. Yeah, it's actually point five seven acres, you know, and it's just, it's where the fence is. So it's, it's-
My point is, it's probably pretty useless to anybody as a standalone reason. That's all I was trying to say.
And that was Judy Clark's position also, is half an acre. You can't build a house on it.
No.
You can't do any improvements. And your property surrounds it.
Right.
So.
Yeah, that's the other key point, Art. You don't have a neighbor that has contiguous connection. Right.
No.
No. This is just your parcels.
There's a parcel on our quarter. You know, and years ago, that all used to lay out as one quarter until the railroad and the highway went through there. Then that highway or road, county road, Somerset goes at such a catty corner angle and the railroad, it took a piece of that quarter.
You can see, this is the map that the State Department of Roads out of Lincoln shared with me. And you can see just that little triangle piece right there in the middle of the diagram. The rest of the diagram is Somerset Road and then the Hazenhour property on both sides.
And Joe, to your point, since there's no other land owner involved, it's fairly straightforward that we can dispense with it.
I've done it in the past, but this, whatever this board chooses to do.
Jason, I would imagine that there's no need for us to maintain that little bit of county right of way.
No.
Okay.
All right. Tyler, what is the procedure for having the Hazenhours acquire that little piece of ground?
You're going to have to vacate it, too, then. There is no mechanism to letting an individual just outright purchase property. It wants to be sold, we have to do it the highest bidder. I don't really want to do that. So the other option is thirty-nine, seventeen, twenty-two, which allows the candidate to vacate it on its own motion, well, fights on resolution, actually.
So we would need a resolution drafted with the meets and bounds description of that.
It'll be a resolution essentially directing Jason to do his study. We can't get out of that. Once he gets that completed, we'll have to set up for a public hearing. And if conclusion of that, resolution about vacating it to them with the meets and bounds and all that good stuff.
Okay.
That would be my preference.
I agree.
Do you need a motion?
No.
No.
We can just direct. Jason, I'm going to direct you to start that study, please.
Yep.
And let's get the ball rolling. And we'll have it on the agenda as soon as we can for a public hearing, pending the study and get the ball rolling to get this vacated.
Does it have to go that way, or can we just request a purchase, small purchase?
As our deputy county attorney said, the only mechanism that we have in place legally is to vacate and that's the process that we have to, we have to take. Otherwise, it goes to a bidder and-
We can't just let you buy it, Art. I wish we could. It has to go to bidder. I don't think we're going to get in the bidding war with somebody for it.
So that, that way, if I would want to start a small cattle operation, I would have a chance to bid on that also.
Small, small being the keyword.
Although I don't believe that anybody, you know, likely would, would bid on it. This just cleans it up and makes it very simple and straightforward.
Sounds like, yeah, the vacating process also protects you.
And if I did bid on it, I'd have to remember I'd have to get along with the neighbor. So that might reduce my ability to bid, so.
So question, do we have a right to bid on it, then?
Nobody's going to bid on it.
You don't have to bid on it.
No. If we go through the debate-
So we don't have to do anything.
You don't have to bid on it. We will vacate the property.
What we would do, what we would do is invite you back for the public hearing. Just make your comments during the public hearing. We would obviously listen to anybody else that came for the public hearing and make determination at the end of that to either vacate or not vacate. Okay?
How long does that usually take, you know, I should?
Be determined on, at least initially, Tyler getting his study done.
Probably going to be forty-five to sixty days by the time we get the study done and get the public hearing done. You still have time to put up fences for.
Fence is there.
Well, the fence goes straight across there. Don't go in the jog.
At least for you to determine whether or not you're going to repair the fence.
It's only been sixty-seven years. What's another sixty days?
Okay, okay. Well, we're getting ready to graze this.
Jason, I can share all the paperwork that the state forwarded to me with you.
Okay.
It's not as intimidating as it sounds. It won't be that big of a process. Just this way, it's clean and then- Just this way, you're it's clean and then.
Yeah, that's what I understand.
You walk away from it.
And one more trip back to town.
And then we know where we're at.
Yes.
That's the big thing.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in.
Okay, we will now move on to our next agenda item, which is discuss the Lincoln County Black-tailed Prairie Dog Management Plan. And I believe Commissioner Woodruff, this is something that you've been working on with Commissioner Ruler.
Yes, we have been working on it and it has been in the hands of Deputy County Attorney Tyler Wolfberg. And he has a copy of a first perusal looks to be fairly much in line with what we had discussed. Would you like to delineate this?
Sure.
More, Tyler?
So it's in front of the board today because there's at least one thing I want to get the board's input on. And that's whether or not we want an advisory council. The management act that I am modeling this on is out of Sheridan County. They set up for themselves a five-person Black-tailed Prairie Dog Advisory Council who would receive and investigate complaints about prairie dogs. I didn't know if the board wanted yet another.
Layer of government.
Another layer of government that is subject to open meetings, that you're gonna have to find five willing individuals to serve on. Or if we thought maybe the prairie dog problem was something that this board or a subcommittee of this board could handle.
Okay.
I I know historically, I don't know if they're here back now, but Custer County used to have prairie dog control mitigation through their noxious weed office. Weed superintendent actually oversaw prairie dog control.
And that so Todd will play a role in this too, as the Sheridan County plan also lays out, that they use the weed superintendent being out and about in the county as sort of a point person to, well, investigate prairie dog issues. Then if they see them as they're out spraying, kind of frankly, they get a double dip while they're out there.
Right.
So yes, Todd, at the direction of the board, would very much be involved in this. It's how how many layers you want over him, whether that's two people or five people or three people or no people. I'm assuming that we'll make use of USDA Jerry and Barry for the actual control mechanisms. I have in place the fall poisoning. I don't know if there are other methods the board wants to consider. I don't think there are any that are terribly effective. But there are a number of things we'd like to be considered yet.
They, uh, it's perfect. It's a good fit to keep USDA front and center on the treatment portion so that we don't have to worry about compliance issues with EPA on treatments because you need another endorsement and you need a lot of records. So that would be also be a good fit. But typically, the weed superintendent, if he's on a parcel that's distressed, for noxious weed, there's a lot of reasons. Sometimes the reason is there's a prairie dog down there, so.
As a member of the weed board, I've already had conversation with Todd. And he's on board a hundred percent. He actually already has a list of properties that he could share with us that they have noticed, you know, while they're out doing weed controls. So I feel like it's a good fit to have them as a reporting entity and work with us and with the USDA as the control mechanism.
I would foresee, I'm not a fan of adding another layer of government. I think that we should be doing everything we can to streamline the process. I think that this could probably be something that could be handled with a subcommittee working hand in hand with our noxious weeds supervisor as well as the USDA. That's my my personal opinion.
Now, yeah, I I I concur that it would be nice to not have the extra layer and the extra expense that would come with that. But there needs to be some mechanism that input could come to either the advisory council or the subcommittee, whichever way we chose to go, such that all of that information either comes to weed board or from weed board directly to us or from the county residents at large to the subcommittee. Is that the way you see this working?
I would see it as a mechanism for the an advisory committee comprised probably two of the commissioners, Todd Hertman and USDA representative, meeting with the parcel owner, hearing their concerns and then bringing that recommendation to this board. That would be my, what I envisioned, but.
Okay, how how does information get to this subcommittee?
I think it would be reporting of either to the by the noxious weed supervisor or from USDA.
Or from the the roads.
Or roads or any.
Whoever's out there.
Concerned citizen?
Concerned citizen.
Neighboring landowner?
Yeah.
I mean, we we utilize USDA when we have, but what do you guess?
There will be one notice that must run prior to, I believe, May ninth of every year that states that there is a management plan, warning people that they have to manage their colonies and essentially putting the board's name on it. So at least the one outgoing mass public notice will have this board's name on it.
And I think that's where it should reside is what this.
And that is the notice to the public landowners that if there is a colony problem that is infringing upon their property, that is their signal to contact this board to begin the process of notifying the offending landowner as to their rights and responsibilities?
It can be. The general notice serves more as simply notice to people that if they have colonies, they have to manage them. They can't simply let them go unmanaged. It's the first step in force control is what it is. Because you're giving everyone a general notice every year that they are statutorily required to manage their colonies. After that, if Jason sees something or his people see something or Todd sees something and it gets reported back, then we go into the steps to do force control. They get a specific notice that gives them so long to correct the problem. If they don't correct the problem, then they get another notice saying that we're gonna come on your land in forty-eight hours and we're gonna take care of it ourselves and we're gonna send you a bill. And that bill is a special assessment if they don't pay it. So it works substantially similar to force control of weeds.
The weed department does have a ten-day notice force control that I feel works really well, that we could model out ours after.
I believe what you've put in here is like a sixty-day state statute.
Well, it's ten-day notice, but it is sixty days total that they get to comply before action is taken.
The Black-tailed Black-tailed Prairie Dog Management Act has its own timelines for force control baked into it. And those are the ones that you see in here.
Okay. Okay.
What about the weed, what about your weed board overseeing it coordination with?
Is there extra compensation for the weed board superintendent for the extra effort that he puts in?
Doesn't say there isn't, but that's up to the board. You set the salary.
Sheridan County tells me that their board tells me that they do have a extra per hour compensation for their weed board superintendent for overseeing their management plan.
That's.
Which makes sense.
Why we're here talking about it.
Is it the opinion of the board that advisory council to handle the complaints?
I I think.
And work with the control officers? Is that the is that the opinion that I am reading from the board?
I I think the chairman hit it right on the head. I think he appoints, and I wouldn't call it a subcommittee, I'd call it a committee. And that's not a subcommittee, it's a committee. He comprised who the committee was, two probably members along with a third individual he mentioned. Anybody can report this, John Q. Public, anyone, you know, according to the writing in here. It's up to the board to ultimately file a follow-up with it. But it sounds to me like a great plan. I'm not a legal expert, but I think Mr. Chairman is right on myself. That's how I would interpret that.
And I think the the good part of or the positives of that sort of a plan is is we save the expense of having that council. We save them the difficult position of being the bad cop. That's all that's Raleigh's job, be the bad cop.
Be as bad as they come.
You let me dig the hole a little deeper, huh? But but that is that that is a very positive part of 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 your of your suggestion. My concern is is to make sure that the residents of this county know who they are to contact when they are being subjected to the adverse effects of neighboring property that does not control their prairie road owners.
Bet you if they don't know now, they'd call our county board member.
I think that that.
That's usually who gets called, isn't it?
You know, I think that they have a variety of different avenues that they can wage a complaint, whether it be through the USDA like we already have, county commissioner like they already have, or just through observation of our own employees at the roads department.
And then if 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 those individuals encounter resistance from that property owner, that's where we begin the process that Tyler suggested.
I mean, we we receive a complaint. It's our responsibility to adjudicate it. So whatever that end may be, that remains to be determined by this committee. And then the recommendation brought up to the board and the board makes the decision.
Okay. I I can I can see your reasoning and and I I think this is a feasible approach. Would it be appropriate to have one, someone that has been involved in this process, give their feedback on that? Brian?
Yeah, maybe have somebody here.
Hi, I'm Wayne Runbeck. I live south of Norplat here.
Please sign in if we need.
Good morning, Wayne.
Morning, how are you guys today?
Doing well, and you?
Good. I have some property that I've been joining. Actually, there's a county road which you guys have prairie dogs on near road south. And since May, I have been fighting the adjoining neighbor, which is across the county road. I had fifty holes and I treated them. And every week, five to seven days, I have been going out there, me and my wife, and treating anywhere from twenty to seven holes every week. The adjoining owner across there's got sixty, seventy acres and nothing but prairie dogs. And they have moved across the road in on digging holes in your county road. Got your whole county ditch full of prairie dogs. And I struggled trying to find anybody that could do, contacted the weed board. They told me to go somewhere else. Contacted the state. Everybody it seemed like nobody had any, just had no teeth to do anything to get done about it. And I got a hold of Mr. Woodruff and it's like maybe we might get something done here that we can, you know. The problem with the prairie dog thing is if, you know, you let it go sixty days or whatever, you got one hole, the next day you're gonna have sixty holes.
Yep.
And I mean, I this is actually school land that I'm trying to keep the the dogs off. Every five days, I go out there and do it. And I understand at certain times of the year that the pro the poison or whatever is doesn't work. And, you know, there's different processes to, I mean, I'm to to get rid of. I mean, I've got some ones of my own, but I mean, the poison will not work in the summertime. In the summertime, if you look at the prairie dogs history, July, June and July is a prairie dogs traditional time to move. It's when he goes out, it's when they migrate or whatever you want to say. And well, there's really no way to control them. And if I wouldn't be controlling mine, I'd have probably two hundred, three hundred holes out there now, if not more.
Wayne, the you've heard what's been suggested as a plan to facilitate the notice and getting folks out there to take care of it. You see this as being a feasible plan?
Uh, yeah, I think you right. I'll be honest with you. I'll be straight up forward with you. The weed board is great and everything, but I can, uh, sometimes I don't think the mussis, so I have them too. A lot of them, or no lot of them, I try to eradicate them. But it doesn't seem like to me it has much teeth. You know, I mean, you turn somebody and I've turned people in on the thistle. Nothing happens, you know? And I know how the process works, you know? I mean, I can take you up and down the county road or anything, show you my thistle every day. And I just I just would like to see more teeth to it. You know, I mean, this is costing me money and time and and no different than the thistle problem is. And I just I'd like to see more teeth in it that some action is taken because you just can't. If somebody's got a prairie dog town next to you and you think you're gonna give them a buffer and just kill a few dogs, you gotta take, you gotta wipe the whole town out.
I've got prairie dogs from neighbors over the years, Wayne, for probably forty-plus years. And it is a pain. And there's no real short-term solution. We don't have anything in place now, so the fact that if we adopt a management plan in the county is the first step. I mean, we have to start somewhere. And to your point about the enforcement, I would have to admit that I don't think we're as aggressive as I would like to see as noxious weed. But having said that, I'm not on the noxious weed board anymore, so I'm not bidding for it or anything, but that notwithstanding, I think it makes total sense because I I I used to know the guy that ran Custer County's program. It makes total sense to have the weed superintendent front and center on this because they are out, first of all. And then because they're familiar, then if we do open a case and say, you know, Joe Joe Smith has a problem here and we want to take care of it, mitigate it, he's the guy that he's our eyes and ears and he's got the inspection pickup and he goes and loves. Rather than have a subcommittee, you know, find the time to go do it. He's out every day. And I guess it's up to this board to determine how we compensate for that additional. I just think it makes a lot of sense to coordinate those things.
I would, to me, because that was the first person I called was, I mean, I didn't know who to go to, you know, to try to solve this problem. And that's, I agree with you a hundred percent that that they kind of go hand in hand.
Yeah, and I go, I have your frustration because I we had a neighbor that wasn't doing anything and we were we were treating our own. And it is, it's and I in fact, I've got some right now that I'm waiting for the fall to attack again because they don't, they won't feed on poison this time here. But it's it's like fixing fence and you know that it's you never.
There is other methods of killing.
I know, I know.
And they're they're not real safe.
There's compliance issues there.
I understand.
Mr. Chairman, there's there's other, you know, I think that we forget one real important resource. You can't always see everything from the road, but we have people over probably every mile of county road in this county once a week. And that's to have Jason talk to his people without being more proactive on reporting. Because, for example, Wayne, we were talking about, that should be something pretty obvious to us. So if we make our people more aware of that reporting process once we get this set up, I think that would be a tremendous resource also.
I I agree. And I think that to the point of the control and the teeth, state statute allows us to implement a plan like this. It's our responsibility to make sure the plan would be enacted, should choose it. And we have partnership with USDA Wildlife Services and we're already paying them to provide these services, so we might as well get our money out of it. The so let's let's just for the sake of the conversation, the cost of the control, the chemical or the means to get rid of the prairie dog would then be on the property owner.
Landowner.
On the landowner that is not taking care of the issue themselves, correct?
Buy a special assessment if they don't bid, just like the noxious weed laws.
Right.
By statute. But back before I, Wayne, your point about the timeliness, there is a way to create a sense of urgency. Because if we play out or force the arm points out to the landowner that if in fact you procrastinate, that cost is going to extrapolate and it's gonna be on your shoulder. So I think there's a way we can create urgency. So I think there's a way we can create urgency, a sense of urgency with the property owner once we adopt the law, the enforcement arm, so we will be similar to noxious weed. Because I know firsthand, I used to run the noxious weed office and I would tell people, if you don't take care of this, we're gonna take care of it and it's gonna cost you a lot more money.
Get, get, get to the problem early before it gets out of him.
Seeds the opportunity to take, take action, be proactive, so I think we can, I think we can emphasize that on our end.
And as, as the commissioner that sits on the noxious weed board, um, as we all know, Lincoln County is a lot of miles and a lot of acres, and I feel like they do a pretty decent job of getting out and taking care of the weeds. I will also say that, um, you know, we try to work with the landowners, we don't go in and strong-arm people immediately, there is a process that's followed and they do do a good job of trying to get them on board and getting them to buy into the program also. Um, and as, as a landowner who has prairie dogs on our property that we try to control and neighboring property, the USDA did have a program where as a landowner, I could call and ask them to come mitigate the prairie dogs on my land, but they weren't always timely in their response. I have neighbors that said they waited three years for, um, you know, the people to show up to start treating, so I do feel like putting some kind of a time response in the language would be beneficial. But I, I do absolutely agree with the conversation here that the weed board would be a great reporting entity and the county roads. Um, you know, I think Jason's department relies on phone calls too because just like with the weed guys, the county road department can't be on every road every day. And so if you have, you know, a concerned citizen call in and make a report, um, and it gets to the right people, I think that's a good step in the right direction in taking care of this.
I think you're right, I, cause it was just, you know, there's nothing in place out there for our concerned citizens, myself and others. Who do we, I mean, who do we even call?
Right, and until we give the weed board or the weed office authority, they, they wouldn't be able to respond to a phone call.
Which is what this plan seeks to establish.
Yeah, this plan-
That it means for us to address the issue throughout the county, to get the problem taken down.
And, and if I understand correctly, if, uh, if we have a committee from this board, that would be a central receiving area for information from concerned citizens, from weed department, from-
Roads Department.
Roads Department.
Roads Department, yes.
Those could come here and then that would be the communication from this committee to USDA that-
Yes.
Post haste, get on this problem.
I think it's a great idea to have elected officials, um, you know, as the catalyst, as the encourager to make this happen.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, as this is a discussion, I am Wayne.
Yep.
I, uh, would hope that we, or Mr. Runbeck's request and Jerry, I think, I, I hope that we're all on the same page here, I think we are.
I think so.
To really get this ball rolling, Mr. Chairman, it for a action item at a later time.
Yep, we need a resolution. So, yeah, we're gonna need a resolution, I would imagine, um, to adopt this management plan.
One-
I'm gonna task you with getting on that, please Tyler.
One other point, if I correct. Jason, does this look to be something that is feasible in your department or is this an overload on your people?
No, I think it's something to communicate to our people as they're out there, just report back-
Being thoughtful.
Either, either to you or-
Yep, actually, as you guys are talking, I already put on a list to discuss in our next forum meeting, so, yep, we're out there to all our people.
Super.
And then we can make sure that Jen has that information, if she gets phone calls, she can refer them over to the weed office.
Or take the information and pass it herself.
Correct.
By the way, we're not setting the citizens.
Yeah, just take the information, don't make them make another call, just take the information.
All righty, so we will have that as a resolution, uh, in the near future.
Thank you, Wayne, for your input.
Thank you guys, I appreciate it.
Moving on to our next agenda item, which we're a little bit behind, uh, discuss and consider an interlocal agreement with the city of North Platte to apply for a CBVG for comprehensive plan housing update, AHAP and Safe Streets. This is something that, uh, we've had a little bit of discussion here and there, skirting larger issue over the past couple months. I've had conversations with Judy, I've invited Judy in today to talk about this, uh, application. Um, and essentially what we have is a need to really take a look at our comprehensive plan for the county, and I think that the city is looking at the need to have that done as well, and it makes sense for us to apply for a grant in concert together to get that done, so. With that, Judy, I will hand the floor over to you to talk about this grant and the request.
I really don't, excuse me, I really don't have much more to say than, than what you did, other than, um, I know Joe went through the process, I don't think the rest of you did. We did this back in 2011, 2012, um, when we first initially updated the comp plans, we did it with a joint, um, with the city and the county. There's a couple of good reasons to do it together, number one, we can actually, um, apply for more funding if we do it as a joint entity, um, whereas if the city does it alone or if the county does it alone, then it's, you know, less money that we can apply for. Plus, it kind of makes the, um, city and the county work together, which is really good when it comes to development, especially in that two-mile jurisdiction between the city and the county, where sometimes there's a lot of differences, there was before 2012, there were a ton of differences between the county and the city, which isn't a bad thing, there should be, but if we can get them to mesh together, especially when you hit that two-mile ETJ, um, it works out a lot better for everybody, um, including the contractors and everyone.
Also works out better for the planners doing that, cost-wise for the city and county board, as you mentioned, because, uh, period.
Yep, so this grant is for $70,000, correct?
That is correct.
Um, and it would be my hope that, should we get this, that as you were saying, we're able to really make sure that we have a cohesive plan with, between the county and the city to address things like housing, which we've identified in this meeting as an issue, um, and to make sure that there's just, it, it, it makes sense, or it makes sense for the, the city to expand with their annexation plans, that we already have the ball rolling and it reduces costs for the taxpayers in the long run, so.
And we will end up with separate documents, so the county will still have their own comprehensive plan, the city will still have their own comprehensive plan, so it's not like we're meshing things together, um, too much, we will still be separate, everything will still be separate. Um, and I am requesting a little bit of money out of the county's budget in the planning department to help support this. Of course, the city is gonna take on the majority of the cost because the majority of, um, what we're gonna do, a few other things with an affordable housing, um, action plan and Safe Streets, most of that is gonna be with the city. The county will still have some benefit, see some benefit from those things, but we'll definitely see a benefit from the comp plan, so.
Yep.
And the housing needs update, cause that was a joint plan, so.
So that's the H, the H, AHAP is the Affordable Housing Action Plan?
Um, yeah, that one and the housing needs assessment update, so that's what-
Oh, housing needs assessment, okay.
That's what the county's gonna see the biggest benefit in those two, so, yeah.
So Tyler, you've had a chance to glean through this?
I have.
Any points for us to consider?
The biggest thing that jumped out at me was paragraph five, where it pretty clearly says that both the city and the county are gonna hook for one half of the local cash contribution.
What I was meaning there was the local cash contribution to match the grant funds of the 70,000.
Okay.
Not the total project, just the grant funds of the 70,000. So if, I mean, if it needs change to clarify that more, that's entirely up to you, but that's what the intent of that was.
And, and what is that local match?
Um, it is, uh, we have to come up with 40% of 70,000 dollars and then that would be split in half, so I think it's around 20, well, around 12 and a half, and then, so that would be 25,000 is what our match would be together, the city and the county's match would be 24,000.
It's like 14,000 would be our portion of that.
14 grand.
Yeah, we're not asking you to come up with, I think in, um, some conversation, the total cost of this project's gonna be probably estimated around 220,000, we are not asking the county to come up with half of that.
Right.
Just half of the 70,000 match.
Half of the 70, for the match for the grant.
Yeah.
And that's a one-time contribution?
Yes.
Okay. And then my only other note of concern would have been the last paragraph under number three, uh, says the city of North Platte would be the only party entitled to the, uh, lock grant funds earmarked for general administration.
So when we apply for this, one entity has to be the person that, um, gets the funds, they are directly deposited into, it would be the city general fund account, and then we would use that money to pay for, to pay out, so it's kinda like a pass-through. So one entity has to be passed through, it either has to be the city or it has to be the county. So since I'm employed by the city, I know interlocal agreement, I mean, I just thought it would be easier if we do it that way, so the city actually gets the funds.
Kind of two, my two questions.
All righty, and then the city is taking this up consideration-
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night at their meeting.
Yes.
Colleagues of mine, any other questions for Judy on this? What is your push?
We need a motion to enter into this interlocal agreement. Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we enter into a, interlocal agreement with the city of North Platte to apply for the CBVG planning grant for comprehensive plan housing update, AHAP and Safe Streets.
Motion by Woodruff, second by Weems, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Dooley?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks Judy.
Much appreciated, Judy.
It's a big project, you guys will see it a lot if we get awarded it.
It's needed.
Needed. Super excited.
Planning meeting at Tarnes coming up, what, 13th or 14th of September?
13th, 14th, yes, 14th, 15th and 16th, if anybody wants to go.
I'm signed up, I think.
Perfect, that's awesome.
I think I'm planning on-
Are you going at all?
Quite the hootenanny.
Yeah.
They, they do have some really good training.
They do. I went last year.
Are you on this show? Awesome.
How afro though.
I thought about doing it before you, but no, yeah. Somebody needs to know how to do it.
Yep. Do we have a need for a closed session?
Okay.
Thanks Judy.
Thanks Judy.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on to our next agenda item, uh, something that I, uh, am a, a big fan of and I'm glad that we are doing this year and will continue to do moving forward, is our Lincoln County employee recognition. We're going to be recognizing a few employees that have many years of service with Lincoln County. Uh, we were going to do it last meeting, cause we typically do it at the, uh, the last meeting of the month, uh, but we had some employees that were otherwise disposed and not able to, uh, to attend, so, uh, we wanted to make sure that we got them recognized and it made sense to do it this meeting, so. As I call you up, appreciate you coming up, I believe we can recognize you in front of the, the public, both livestream and here today, as well as the press. Um, we have Tanner here.
Tanner's actually not going to attend, so.
He is out?
He did not wanna take away from his productivity.
Well, I'm gonna recognize him anyway, Tanner Dirksen for five years of service with our Lincoln County Department of Roads. You would please, Jason?
Yes, I will.
It's that, he understands that we as a board absolutely appreciate the work that he's doing as one of our form. Next is James Pishnup, five years of service.
Same thing.
Same thing.
Away from what he was doing.
A lot of these guys don't get, like, in front of the camera, do they?
No, they don't.
Maybe your boss is just nasty. Next we have Jesse Sonafell. Jesse, 10 years of service, uh, I'd like to thank you on behalf of the Lincoln County Board for the work that you've done for Lincoln County. Are you moving on?
I am.
Well, regardless, thank you for the time that you've served the taxpayers and we do appreciate it, we wish you the best in your future endeavors.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Season Trevino. You've got your battle rap on.
Yeah.
10 year, or 20 years of service, congratulations, thank you so much for the work that you've provided, um, Lincoln County. I know I speak very highly of you, but the work that you've done, appreciate it, but thank you. And last, another 20 years of service for Brett Lundry, Sheriff's Office. 20 years, that's an accomplishment. We do appreciate it, thank you. So I can't, I cannot, uh, can't say enough about the appreciation, appreciation we have for, for your many years of service, everybody that's here today. Uh, the work that you do is invaluable for Lincoln County and we wouldn't be able to operate without you, so.
Mr. Chairman, we, we have some other guests in the audience, I wonder if we might have an introduction in front of them?
Oh yes, who's here?
Uh, this is my husband Cameron and my children, Kason, Hudson, Jensen, and then the newest little member of our family, his name is Grayson.
Which is why we weren't able to do this last week.
He's a half a week old today, so.
Well, congratulations in that regard as well, both of you, so. Okay. Uh, at this time, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is hear concerns from elected officials, department heads or their representatives. We do appreciate everybody else being here.
Thanks for coming in.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Jason, I know I got my finger cut.
Was that it?
I remember getting some, kind of.
The cleaning script?
If you taste- No, I can just, I'll just push it back.
My, my friend that was from family were holding a hammer and a hammer and it misshapen me, the jeweler sent to me when I took him.
Did you sign it?
I can't.
The jeweler says to me when I took it, did you slide it?
Tyler?
That is worse than ever happened.
Don't go to the smog. I don't know, right in here. Yeah, once you're done, you're done. I don't know if we have any more claims.
Claims, claims are done. Can, can we do Jason so he can get back to work?
Yeah.
Is he gonna adjourn?
I just want to. Sir, is, oh, that's not my position, I'm sorry. Is there something we could help you with, sir, just observing?
I was given a notice to appear this morning on my request to be considered for late filing with my, my.
Oh, sir, we actually, we already handled that, and we did grant the, your late filing. I'm sorry, we did that earlier before you got here, but it is all okay.
Okay, well, I was preoccupied getting this done.
Yeah, well.
So in the first part of July, I thought I was able to clear my mind.
I, that happens to all of us, doesn't it?
And I thought, oh, and then my accountant dropped the ball, and.
You must be.
They fessed up, they fessed up to it, yeah.
You must be Charles Morgan, nice to meet you, Mr. Morgan.
Yeah, we, we granted you that extension. Great.
Sorry to make you sit here through all that.
Good news.
Thank you, sir, all right.
Thank you very much.
As soon as he adjourns, I mean, you and Jason with Tyler, so he can get back to work.
Okay. Am I getting fired? You can't get fired. You can get flawed, but you can't get fired.
I don't, I think that's outside our authority.
No, maybe this is. You, you get it, I don't want to.
I ain't hitting your finger.
Oh, here, I'll do it, what are you? Oh, it's going back.
Perfect, little bit more.
You just need to spit on it.
Did you get any finger off?
He hasn't. He hasn't.
Just knock all the diamonds out of your head.
Thank you. Thank you, Raleigh.
Jason, would you like me just to email you all that stuff about Hazenhowers? I have a, I have a folder.
You know, I'm usually not around.
We're done.
It's not very round, it's rounder than a sun. And all the diamonds are.
The pre, the press supersedes us.
Can we adjourn? Can the vice chair adjourn the meeting?
You are adjourned.
Can, can.
Can he adjourn us?
I don't know. When the chairman's here, I don't know, so.
Raleigh, did you have anything for us? You're with them? Your security for those guys over there?
Well, we could go meet with our timers. Can we go meet with the timers? Yeah, still, there are three of them.
I'd say yes, can we? Pass chair.
You, you set it up, it's Tyler, will you inspect to us over there?
Yes.
Let's go.
Okay. Works for me. Oh, here he is.